Rhondrell.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth, and thank you so much for joining us. Let's give her a round of applause. I'm going to echo her sentiments. It's so amazing to see everybody taking part in this political discourse. We're looking for a really wonderful evening hearing from all of our candidates for the school board. We're going to start things off by, if you can, stand, and we're going to do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, you may be seated. Just want to go over very quickly our event sponsors for tonight, and they are, of course, the League of Women Voters, the NAACP, Tribune Star, and of course, the Vigo County Public Library. We are so thankful for all of your contributions to make this event happen. I've been told to say, and I know that we will, even in disagreement, respectful communication and behavior is required. Yelling, using profanity, and speaking abusively are certainly not allowed, but we're not going to have any issues with that tonight, I'm sure. And so I will be reading your questions on tonight. They have been submitted ahead of time. We have so many people. We're going to try to get through as many as possible. And so we're going to start with our candidates, and what I would like you to do is to take a minute. And also, Robbie, could you kind of raise your hand in the front row? Yes, she is our wonderful, amazing time moderator, so just follow the signs. Whenever you see 30 seconds, you have 30 seconds left. When you see stop, please stop, if you could. And so we'll be able to get through because, as you can see, we have a lot of things to get through on tonight. So we are going to start to my left with District One with Carrie Lobella. And if you could just take one minute to introduce yourself and kind of your platform and just let us know a little bit more about you.
Hi, my name is Carrie Lobella. I'm a Vigo County Public Librarian, Adult Services Librarian, and I decided to run for school board this year because I am a mother of four young children. I have a seven-year-old, a six-year-old, a four-year-old, and a two-year-old. The, my two oldest attend to Vani Elementary, and I have two in preschool. And I'm really looking forward to doing my part to move the VCSE forward. And with our strategic plan, I'd like to improve communication, especially from the board to the community, administration to the community, and do better with our mental health programs and school safety. So excited for everybody tonight.
Thank you very much, Carrie. And then to... I'm going to leave that up to the candidates. If you would like to, you can stand up. We're not requiring you to tonight, but if you could speak. As I was about to say, if you can hear on the microphones, that's kind of the main objective at this point. We're so crowded and we're even kind of condensed up here. If you would like to, you're more than able to, but we're not going to require that tonight. And let's move on to her right, and that would be Eric Graves, also from District One. Not here. Okay, I'm so sorry. Let's move on to District Two, Jim Bell. Just follow my order, if you don't mind. We'll go on to District Two, Jim Bell. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Jim Bell. I'll stand up so you can see me. I'm from West Terre Haute. I work for the Harrison Township.
Okay, here's the thing, ladies and gentlemen. We'll try to work as best as we can with the microphone system, but we need you to just, as best as you can, kind of listen. If we, the less we have audience participation, especially at this point, the better. So let's just try to get through this. Thank you very much. Go ahead. All right, talk now and let's see if we can hear you.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Is that better?
Okay.
All right, there we go.
Hi, my name's Jim Bell. I'm from West Terre Haute. I'm running for District Two School Board. I have a sophomore that goes to West Vigo High School, and I am looking forward to running for school board, being transparent, because we need a lot of more transparency in this school board. We need to listen to the community more, and we don't have to necessarily vote yes all the time.
All right, thank you very much, Jim. Next up from District Two, we'll have Craig Enyard.
Hi, everybody. So first off, thank you all for coming today. It's great to see everyone coming out for this important position here. My name is Craig Enyard. I'm currently Assistant Dean of Students and Director for Student Conduct at Indiana State University. I have a few degrees in criminology, and I'm finishing up my degree in teaching and learning for my doctorate. I'm all but dissertation, so we'll hopefully get that one done and go from there. Over the last few years, just a little bit about me, I've served on for the last decade and a half the emergency response team. I am FEMA certified. Just making sure that we're looking at safety and looking at diversity and inclusion initiatives there at ISU and the community. My platforms are really about safety, not only physical safety, but also mental health, making sure that we have the right mental health where it is. And representation should matter when we're looking at both books in the library, as well as people in the classroom, staff that we have around campus as well, and in our buildings and in our administration. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Moving along now, we will hear from Dylan Moss.
Hi, I'm Dylan Moss. I'm running District Two, West Terre Haute. I've lived there since I was four years old. And the reason why I'm running is because when I have a three-year-old and a four-year-old, a four-year-old girl and a three-year-old boy, and then when they grow up and look at what's going on in the world today with the situation of inflation and everything, I don't want them to turn around and ask me why I didn't step up to the plate, okay? I understand that there's multiple people under umbrella of a community, and I want to listen to everybody. And I don't know what else to say besides I'm here to try to help, and I'm a hard worker. I'm a union electrician, and I will bring my hard work ethics to everything I do and everything I put, everything I put first in my life. I put my all into it. No matter if people agree with me or not, I'm trying to do best what's right for, give my vote to the people, basically, if I win, you know? That's it.
Thank you very much, Dylan. And finally, from District Two, James JD Skelton.
JD Skelton, District Two. Once again, thank you, everyone, for coming. I think it's important that we get together like this and definitely have the question, so you better understand who we all are. There's 14 people running this year. That is one of the largest turnouts we've had in years. The reason for that is the next year and a half to two years, the decisions that's made on this board will affect this county and affect these students for the next 50. Folks, we've got a lot in front of us. I'm a proud citizen of Vigo County now, going on 30 years. I've had three kids, two of them in the system, one of them that's graduated. And what I'm running on is just common sense, business thought process. What can we do to make it better, but also make it as fiscally responsible to the taxpayers as we possibly can within the county? Just not districts, but the whole county. Also, we've got to bring back the trust and transparency within the board and also the Vigo County School Corporation. No ifs and buts, but that is probably one of the most important things, and in turn, have the communication ramped up.
Thank you very much. Let's move on now to District Four, and we will start with Clark Cowden.
Hi, my name is Clark Cowden, and I'm running for a seat on the school board because our community is at a crossroads, and we need leadership for the future. I graduated from Terre Haute North High School. I attended ISU. After college, I moved away for about 30 years, gaining valuable leadership experience around the country before moving back home about seven years ago. I have a master's degree and I have a doctorate. Before I came back, I served as the Executive Director of a large, complex nonprofit group in San Diego. We had about 13,000 members. Our school district has about 13,000 students in it. I know how to lead an organization the size of our school district, and I know how to lead change. Nobody asked me to run for the school board. I volunteered for it because I have the skills, the background, and the experience to bring about change for you. If you're looking for change in our school system, I can help make it happen.
Thank you very much. Continuing in District Four, Ken Warner.
I'm Ken Warner. My wife Kathy and I have lived in Woodridge since 1987, but we're both ISU graduates. Our children both went through the East Side and through North High School. Kathy's retired school teacher. Matter of fact, our entire family are educators, multi-generational. And even though I own a financial service practice, I actually coach high school basketball in Illinois. It's one of my passions. I'm running for the school board because I wanted to bring, I think the school board should be made up of a diverse group of people with different skill sets and different outlooks on our future. And I wanted to bring in more of a business-like and analytical approach to that seat. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Continuing with District Four, Joshua Stonebreaker.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Josh Stonebreaker. I want to thank you all for coming out. This is a great turnout. I currently work for the Bureau of Prisons. Out there, I hold the Senior Officer Specialist position and the Union VP, also a diversity instructor, and I've written national policy for the Bureau of Prisons. I've been on several policies. I agree with everybody up here, what they've said about the school corporation and transparency is definitely a need. It must be if it brought 14 people out to step into this uncomfortable light up here. As you'll notice, most of us are all parents, so we have skin in this game. And we want to do right by our children, your children, your grandchildren, and whatever we can do to help out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving now to District Five, Rose Marie Scott.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay. I'm looking out here seeing a whole lot of familiar faces. I'm the only incumbent that's running out of the four open seats on the board. Many of you may know that. So all these, all these new faces we see are truly new. I, I've really learned a lot in my last three and a half years on the board, but there were many things that I brought to the board that I will continue to bring. I'm a mother of five. I sent all my children through school into college. And I always tell everybody, my slogan is "I before ye to the SAT." I feel like, you know, we're, we all know what it's like, and we, we all love all of our kids. And I keep working for every one of them. Thirteen thousand, thirteen thousand seven hundred, the number kind of changes. But I'm going to care about every one of them, just like they were mine.
Thank you very much. District Five continuing, Richard Berger.
Hello, my name is Rick Berger. I work at Duke Energy, been there 45 years. Hometown is Jasonville. I farm with my brother and nephew down in Jasonville still. We have four children, eight grandchildren, and I think the strengths I can bring to this board, when we lived in Lafayette, I served on Lafayette School Board eight years. I understand the budget, grants, and other opportunities as a school board member. So I bring that. I've also served on a lot of community boards here that I think we need to build stronger partnerships with the communities out there, the boards out there. So these are the things. I promise you, I'll be a believer in all the potential we have here. And I'll be an active school board member. I want to earn your respect as a school board member. This is not an easy task, not an easy task. I served on the county council. I thought that was an easy task. It was not. But this will be a tough one. That's it. Thank you.
Moving on in District Five, Michael Kukowicz.
Thank you very much. My wife and I were born and raised here in Vigo County. We have three daughters and a grandson currently in elementary school. And I decided to run based on frustrations I've had in the past with what I thought was not the most optimal financial performance. I've heard things from parents. I've heard things from teachers. What I'd like to offer is my leadership. I worked at Regional Hospital 43 years, most recently retired as the IT Director, led many teams, sat on several committees. I just feel like we can do better. I've gone to school board meetings where it just seems like there's just a bunch of rubber stamps, and financial responsibility's not always been there. How am I doing? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Jeremiah Menke.
I'll stand up, Jeremiah. I'm running for school board. I have four kids in the school system, one that's out. I have two in elementary. I have one in middle school. I have one in high school. And I'm going to be involved regardless. I think the biggest thing for me, obviously, everybody has talked about transparency. Community involvement is very necessary, but the biggest thing for me is accountability. You know, I looked over the 2020 Comprehensive Plan, and I'm very curious to see how the accountability for those plans are. I'm also curious to see why the community's a little worried about the shutting down of schools when that was in the Comprehensive Plan. I'm not saying I was for that. I'm just saying that it was in the Comprehensive Plan. So my big thing is community involvement, being a face, so people know me in the schools, being a face, so people know me in the community. Because how can you have a school board if you don't know your community and you don't know your schools? You're not going to know your issues. So I'm here, I'm involved, I'm a parent, I care. I grew up here. I graduated from Terre Haute South, and I want to give back some time to this community because I care about it.
All right. And the last word goes to, from District Five, Daryl Summerlot.
Hello, I'm Daryl Summerlot, owner of S&amp;T Septic and Escavation. I'm actually going to stand so that way everybody can see me. I believe I agree with pretty much everybody here. Full transparency. I believe there's many things in our school corporation that, as parents, we don't know really what's going on. I believe we need to have a budget in place, and we can stick to it. Stop raising taxes on Vigo County residents that are on fixed incomes, that can no longer survive. I believe we need to make changes for the better. We need to have a budget that the residents here in Vigo County actually know what is being spent on and where our money's being spent. Thank you.
All right, thank you, and we appreciate hearing from all of our candidates. We're going to move along now to our questions that were submitted by our sponsors. And I just want to note, from a timing purpose, we hope to be, or we will be finished by 7:45 so that you can have a meet and greet session with the candidates at 8 o'clock, and then we will be out by 8:30. So I've got them on a strict timeline if I'm kind of plowing through these things. But let's start out with a question from the League of Women Voters of Vigo County. And this is for all of the candidates, and we also want to note, too, not every candidate has to answer every question, but if it definitely applies, we want to give you time to speak. So first question, increasingly, multiple communities are facing challenges in school board elections having to do with candidates willingly funded by what is known as, quote, "dark money groups." What are your concerns about school board candidates being funded by dark money? And how would you make your campaign financial reports public? This is open to anyone who would like to answer.
I'm self-financed. I'm doing everything on my own, and I'm doing it for the better of the community, to help out in any shape or way that is being transparent.
Okay, here's, okay, let's, so let's, let's set some ground rules. We're learning as we do, right? This is the fun part of it. One second. Okay, so let's do this. Whenever we are going to answer a question, let's raise your hand. I will point to you. You say your name and your district, and then you answer your question. If you would like to stand, you're more than able to stand, but definitely take the mic and speak loudly and clearly into it. Can we all agree on that? Does that work? All right, let's try to do that. All right, go ahead, sir, and start again. Say your name, your district, and answer.
Do you want me to stand up?
Go for it. Yes, sir.
All right, Dylan Moss, District Two. All right, I'm self-financed. I want to talk about all these questions that really don't matter to me. I worry about what's going on in the community, and I have deep ties in all of my communities throughout Terre Haute and Vigo County District. And the people that are going to vote for me know that, you know, when there's pressing times and you need to vote no, no matter who is helping you on these dark horse things with people's campaigns, that people's, I don't know, I don't know nothing about it because nobody's helping me. And I'm in, so, you know, I just figured that'd lighten the mood on that.
All right. Thank you very much. Go ahead, sir.
So again, my name is Craig Enyard, and the first and foremost is I have to fill out a financial disclosure form just like everybody else. And so I am self-financing this. My family, the three kids, and my wife Cher is a teacher. We're doing this on our own. This is important to us. It's important for our family to make sure that we have this opportunity to have a voice on the school board. And by that kind of extension, the community in which we live having a voice on that school board. The thing with, with doing this on our own is I don't have anyone that I owe any favors to. The concern about dark money is where is the money coming from? Who's going to ask you for those favors? Remind you that you had money coming into them? And do you have any other things that you have to do? Are there stakeholders involved in that? Absolutely. You are the stakeholders in that. We're living in an area that is 56% financially disadvantaged. Right now, we're in inflation, so 96% of us are. So we want to make sure that we are being very cognizant of our money, where it's coming from. For my campaign, it's coming from my family and going straight back into the community.
All right, thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Clark Cowden from District Four. I have a number of people who are donating to my campaign because they are excited that I'm running, and I'm appreciative of their support. The most important thing is that you follow the law. There are reporting requirements, and we are following all of those so that everybody who donates, all the expenses, will be reported as properly as they should be. Everybody who donates knows that I'm somebody who cannot be controlled. I am an independent thinker. I make up my own mind. Nobody who donates expects anything in return from me. I work for the people. If I'm on the board, I work for you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Daryl Summerlot, District Five. The main part of me running for this is I have high integrity. I can look at everybody in their eyes and tell you I am 100% self-funded. I've actually spent $0 on this entire campaign. I have zero signs out because I want to meet every single one of you and actually get to know you, not see a sign on the side of a road, and you're like, oh, that sounds good. No, I actually want to know you and tell you what I'm about. And as far as dark money goes, I don't need any of that. I'm not, I'm for you, I'm for the people, and I'm for Vigo County. So integrity is what I'm running for. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll start with Carrie, and then we'll go to you.
Carrie Lobella, District One. I will be honest, I'm not self-funded. I'm a public librarian, so, but I will tell you this. I have just been meeting people one-on-one, and some very nice families have been giving me $25, $50 to help me get those yard signs out. And you will see, like, I will be following the campaign finance law. October 14th is the first filing deadline. And so you'll see those reports. Those are publicly available. They'll be on the county site. I will admit, I have been taking those little bits to pay for my signs because I, you can't do it all if you're going to get those signs out and, you know, going to be in the parades and do all of that. But I've been very fortunate that there are some very nice families that have been giving me a bag of Tootsie Rolls to throw at the parade. So, you know, I will admit that I will be reporting that legally and following all the law. And I've got very good people helping me make sure that we've got those receipts and everything is tracked. But I do think that, you know, we do need to know where the money's coming from, so thank you.
Thank you. Wait, Mr. Kukowicz.
Yeah, hi, I'm Mike Kukowicz from District Five. I am completely self-funded, and part of the reason I was motivated to run was because of what I've seen in some of the areas of the country where the dark money has come in and tried to influence school boards or completely take them over. Yeah, I've got some signs. I've got a Facebook page. If you'd like to check that out, I've put my position and my platforms on there. So that's pretty much it. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
I'm definitely putting out signs. Jeremiah from District Five. I'm buying my own signs, but if you would like to contribute $5, I would definitely take it. Just being honest. I have to get it out there because I'm running, so I want to win, all right? Because I do care, and dark money, yeah, don't worry about that with me. I'm doing my own thing. It's not about money. It's about the kids. It's about what we can do for this school system and helping out this community. That's why everybody's here in this room, and thank y'all for coming.
All right, thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Hi, JD Skelton, District Two. Guys, there has to be a paper trail for everything. As people have said up here, it's legally binding. You guys can find out who has given us donations. I'm very fortunate. I've had family, friends, businesses give me money. Now, I want to make this clear. Within meetings with people that would love to contribute to me, and I, and I, it's wonderful they're doing that, I have disagreed with people that have given me finances. My viewpoint is not for everyone, okay? Nor is anyone setting up here, but the deal is to be honest to yourself and not be owned by anyone. To do what you want to do that's best for the kids and the students. But I must say again, anyone that's worried about dark money, it's easy to find those and see exactly where it's coming from.
Thank you very much. Yes.
I'm Ken Warner in District Four, and I am also self-funded. One of the reasons I'm self-funded is my father-in-law was on the school board, not in Vigo County, but in Sullivan County for four terms, and he was self-funded. And when I looked at running several years ago, the first time, his advice was if you want to do this, invest in yourself, invest in the community, and pay for it yourself. And that's what I've done.
Very much. Would anyone else like to answer the question from?
I would.
Yes.
I think part of the reason why that question was asked is because it's going on. Of course, there are legalities. You can look at what people turn in and who gives people money. But we're all smart enough to know that these people, whoever they may be, or this company, whoever it may be, they're going to want something in return. I ran for school board three times before I won. I never had any big contributors, and this time, I also don't. And I'm the lady that votes no. A lot of people don't know my name, but they know my vote. It's not for sale. There, there won't be any influence. You are who I care about impressing, not some company that's having separate fundraisers, which I know that many of you out here know that this has already gone on, that there was a separate fundraiser. Some of us were invited to us, but most of us were not.
All right. So with that being said, let's move on, and a hush falls on the crowd. Let's move on to the next question, though. Let's, let's go on to the next question, and I'm holding this up here because I want you to see that it says, Rhondrell, it is requested that this question be read exactly how it's worded, so I will read this exactly how it's worded. Just want to make sure we're being clear on this. And this comes from the NAACP. And it says, quote, "Recently, public controversies about critical race theory, or CRT, have impacted state laws and school policies. Based on your understanding of what CRT is or is not, tell us if you believe it is impacting the education of children in grades K through 12 in Vigo County schools. And if so, please provide a specific example of why or how." And that is to the entire panel. Yes, sir.
Jeremiah, District Five. Look, we're polarized. There's a lot of things, there's a lot of focus on a national level. We're not a national level here in Vigo County. We're a small community, and we need to focus on the small community. Because if you understand anything about politics, you're not going to affect change on a national level. You're going to do it at home. And home goes from there. You, your governor, your mayor, your state legislator, your school board, however it is. So, you know, national level issues, we'll get there when we get there. What's affecting us in this community? And if critical race theory comes to a point where we have to talk about it, then we're going to talk about it. And I'm going to hear what you have to say. I'm going to understand what the administration has to say, and we're going to figure it out. That's the only way we're going to do this, is conversation and communication and all those other issues. Until they come here, we're going to let that be.
Very much. Yes, sir.
That was pretty good. Very true.
Thanks. I'm, once again, I'm still Mike Kukowicz in District Five. I don't think by strict definition CRT is being taught in our schools, or I don't think it's being approached. My concern is, is that history, some people are wanting to distort history or leave some of the ugly parts out, and that's kind of frightening because what you should learn from history is some of it is bad. And we need to learn that so we don't repeat the same mistakes. And that's one of the things that really scares me and why I decided to run. I don't think we need to give kids propaganda. We need to give them the truth so they understand how we got to this point. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So again, Craig Enyard, District Two. The problem with critical race theory is that it's been polarized, right? So it's not a full understanding about what that curriculum actually stands for. And the, the big part of this is having honest conversations about the history of the United States and where things come from and where we're moving forward from where we were. We have to have honest conversations with everyone on everything so that they can go out into a global society, see things on TikTok, see things on YouTube, and have honest conversations about it. Again, the problem is critical race theory has been used as a buzzword and not actually taught for what it is. And it's just really having an honest conversation about history so that our kids and people moving forward can have a chance to make a better future.
Thank you very much. Sir.
Clark, Clark Cowden, District Four. I'm not aware of any evidence of critical race theory in our school district. My son, who's a teacher, has a best friend who teaches middle school history in North Carolina. And every year, they teach slavery, Civil War, Jim Crow. The very beginning of the year, when the parents come in, he tells them, this is what we're talking about in our class this year. He's very upfront, what they're doing, everything is put on the table, what the conversations are, what he wants them to talk about at home. He says, if you have questions or concerns, call me. He has never had any problems, and that's because he's transparent. He's upfront, and he's honest, and that goes a long way. If I'm on the school board, I'll be transparent with people in the community, and I'll work to make sure our teachers and our school district are transparent with you.
Very much. We'll start with Carrie and then we'll go to you, Dylan.
Carrie Labella, District, District One. I agree with what most have been said tonight. I would just want to add that I think we all, as parents and educators, want to teach our kids to think for themselves. And in order to do that, you have to teach history in an honest way. And you can't do that by being neutral about history. You have to explain how we got there so that they can learn from it, and so that they don't repeat it, and they can think for themselves moving forward. And so that's, you know, where I stand on it and what I want, plan on doing with the school board. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Sir?
I think all the answers to our community are inside this room or inside the county because I know Mr. Dwayne Malone knows a lot about this subject. And I'm going to go ask Dwayne Malone. I'm going to go ask Mr. Sylvester what his opinion is on these issues. There's people that have all the answers right here in our own community. And that's why I want to bring like a little family atmosphere. And everybody needs to be heard, you know? And if, if they have an issue that they want to bring to the table, I got to be the person that's going to bring it to the public, bring it to the corporation, you know? Be honest with everybody and listen, you know? And I did that with the union whenever the BLM riots was going on and everything. I hated that our city was getting destroyed, so I tried creating something. And I invited everybody to put their, their thoughts and opinions out there for everybody. And the Terre Haute Police Department come out to a little meeting I created and, and said that we're getting body cams for. And that was one of the initiatives that, that was going on. So if you want to fix problems, you go ask the people that have the problems. And that's all I do.
There you go.
Thank you very much. All right, yes, sir.
I had, Ken Warner, I've been, was asked about CRT a lot from people I've talked to. None of them could actually explain it back to me, you know, their perception of it. I'm not sure that I could accurately explain it myself. I just do believe this. I believe that everything we do needs to be to enhance the educational outcome of our kids. And the less division that we have, the better. And we do have, we've had a lack of, of the history of the accomplishments of minorities and what we were taught. And I can now understand, I understand how my minority kids that I coach, you know, feel and how they understand that. I think there'll be a time when we'll have that discussion about CRT. But I think we'll have to objectively look at what the curriculum is and decide how it's going to affect our kids, if it is going to be a plus or a minus to the educational outcome in the end for our kids.
All right, thank you very much. Would anyone else like to answer that question? All right, then let's move on to some public questions. And if you come to our normal Cracker Barrel sessions, we're going to do things a little differently. We're not going to have people come up. As you've been told, we've had questions submitted. So these are all of the questions that we've had submitted up until this point. So let's just see what happens. We're going to go through this. And as always, we, we hope that everybody will stay respectful, one minute per candidate, and not each person has to answer every single question. So we'll start with this one. And this is from you all. "Being engaged in our community helps network and set a feel of the needs in Vigo County. How have you been involved beyond the campaigns, and what do you see as our biggest need for our children?"
I'll take a, I'll take the lead all the time.
Okay.
Well, I know poverty is a huge issue in our county, and that's coming from some of the public officials with all the numbers that I don't have, but I've heard the numbers come out of their mouth. And poverty is huge. And poverty is getting worse. So, you know, the basics is what I would like to focus on, you know? Make sure our kids are eating during the summertime, whenever there ain't no school, and, you know, get down to the, the troubled child that ain't having nobody stand up for him, you know? And, and if we can all rally together around one common goal, I think that there could be magic coming out of Vigo County if people all want to work together. Because I don't have every single answer, and I ain't going to act like it. But I will find the person that does.
All right, thank you very much. Carrie?
Carrie Labella, District One. Something I see every day when I work here at the library is the community need. And it's something we do at the library to, to answer that need. And I'm going to agree that it's poverty, but it's generational poverty. And it's, it's a cycle that we have to break. And so if we can't find a way as a community to stop that cycle, we're never going to raise these kids up and out of those dangerous homes or that hunger, that drug abuse, and that crime. So I think we need to work together from all of those points of views to get them out of that situation and into a, a better future. And I think the school board can play a major role in that in the community.
Thank you very much. I believe, Mr. Berger, you had your hand up?
Yeah, please.
Yeah.
Rick Berger, District Five. My family and I have lived here 21 years, and I've seen this community improve itself. It's a better community today. We got a long way to go, but I see people working together better. Are we ever going to have a perfect day here in Terre Haute, Indiana? No. But I hope we do. But I think some key words that I see on some of the boards I serve on, Chamber, Terre Haute Economic Development Work One, Children's Museum, I see all these working together right now. And being a conduit, they're just partnerships that they can help with and develop grants together and opportunities. I see the city and county government working better together. So if we stay on that focus, we'll be that best community. And those are just opportunities that we have in front of us. You got to believe in all that potential that's out there. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm still in District Five. Mike Kukowicz. What I feel are the needs of our students are to have a good, safe environment for learning, both physical, physical safety and safety from bullying. I'm hearing a lot about that and not seem, it seems like people aren't getting what they need. Of course, kids need to, they need a safe place to go to, to learn. I know that there is some poverty in our community, and we need to help that as much as we can, yeah. But, and the other thing we really need is to have higher and retain really good teachers, to have a goal of having a great educational experience. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Jeremiah Minkie, District Five. You know, I think the biggest thing is just community, man. Like, we need to have a more tight-knit community, you know? I used to work with Sentas, you know? I recently went with Gravity. Now I'm working with Addiction Services. There's a lot of people, you know, obviously, there's communities experience. But we need to have that. Because like, my opinions, I have them, but I want to know your opinions. I want to know what the teachers' opinions are. I want to know what the, the people at the schools' opinions are. So we can collectively get together and say, "Hey, this is what we're faced with. These are the issues, and these are the thoughts." And then we got to find some kind of solution that's going to work. But we need a tight-knit community because we're losing students to these smaller communities that invest in their children, invest in their schools. We're not investing. I'm saying this, we are not investing in our community and our schools. And we need to, and that's what we need to do.
Yes, sir.
I'm passionate, I'm sorry.
All right, it's all right.
Again, Craig in your District Two. I built a career on student success. And I know that our students aren't going to be successful unless they have all the other needs that they need to met. If a student is worried about where their next meal is coming from, they are not going to be able to focus on math. If they got two hours of sleep because they were in an unsafe environment, for whatever reason, they are, we can't be surprised when their behavioral issues are concerns for that student. We're also dealing with a student and community and teachers that are exhausted. Everyone is tired. Everyone has spent the last three years dealing with COVID, dealing with masks, dealing with policies that have just been given to them and told. And it's time for people to just sit and listen, not talk, not give their opinion on what needs we do, but actually sit and listen to what someone else has to say, what their experience is, and then take that into consideration when they're making policies.
Thank you very much. Let's see. All right, let's go with you, and then you and you. Go ahead.
Me?
Yes, sir.
JD Skelton, District Two. I've got a 20-year career in mental health. I worked for a pharmaceutical company primarily specializing in schizophrenia, bipolar, and major depressive disorder. When we talk about networking the community, something that we've got to address within the high schools, middle schools, elementary schools, is the issue we have with mental health. Post-pandemic, it has went up 1,200%. And we have close to half of the providers not working anymore due to lack of funds and not being able to find folks in the, in the, in the professional setting. We've got to find better ways, not only work with Hamilton Center like we currently do with the school corporation, but look for different avenues to get these kids taken care of when it comes to mental health, and also how we're going to control that for a better atmosphere within the school.
Mr. Berger?
Darrell Summerlot, District Five. So, not many of you know me. I was volunteer firefighter for about five years. I've, I've put a lot back into my community because I care about it. As far as Vigo County schools, we need to start taking accountability for our actions here. Only, we are part of this problem that we've created. Vigo County is not the greatest school district, but it can be. And with the right people, we can push forward and make change that needs to happen in this community. And without change, we will stay stagnant and we'll just fall. It's, and we are falling right now. So we need change. We need the community, we need you guys at our back in pushing us and driving us to do better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go ahead. Yes.
I also agree with all these problems. I think most of us know that we have poverty. We have generational poverty. We know that we put so much on our teachers that we expect them to do everything for our kids. They have to be the parents. They have to be the teacher. They have to make sure they have winter coats sometimes, shoes on their feet. So it isn't like we don't all know we have all these problems. But when you're sitting on the board, you can have wonderful ideas, but how do you exercise those into the everyday life of the students? We really do not have power on the everyday things. But one of the things we can change is curriculum. One of the ways we can raise kids up is by helping them read, by helping them learn. We need more health. We need more science. We need to start it younger. All of that costs money. When you, when you talk about most of these problems, we, they're old problems. We've all known about them.
All right. Did you, yes?
Just a few short years ago, we sat in this room, we were debating the jail. And we identified all of those underlying problems. And we all talked a lot about how we would, how we would, you know, cure them. But once we got past the jail, we kind of dropped the ball. And one of the questions was, what have you, you know, accomplished? Well, I can say the other things I've accomplished, I didn't do any of it without a strategic partner from somebody someplace else. I started Bikes for Tikes. But I can tell you, if Rose Holman didn't put those bikes together, we'd still be out there. Because it takes people of different groups, more than just working together, but to have a defined program, a defined structure on how to attack these problems. I was lucky enough to be at Lost Creek School. And with RZR, we started the first after-school free tutoring program. We did, but we had to partner with the teachers' union. We had to partner, you know, with the individual teachers there. I think we've got the resources in this community. It's here. It's here. It's this, we kept working in silos and learned to build these partnerships, not just working together, partnerships, and then we could be successful.
All right. Okay, so let's move on now to our next question. And it says, "Most schools welcome parent involvement, but recently, some school corporations are being asked to give up control of curriculum to parents. How do you view this?" Yes, sir.
I'm going to answer every question that I can. So again, my name is Craig in your District Two. Our teachers went through training, and they are the experts in their classroom and in the field that they, they got their degree. They should be treated like the experts in their field. Nothing that I do, there is nothing more frustrating for me in a position to sit there and say someone else is making a decision for an area that I am an expert in, or that my expertise or my training or my education is a focus on. So yes, our parents should be involved. They should be, have a transparent curriculum so that our stu, our parents can be having conversations with their students when they come home or in the classroom, and, and supporting the teachers in the classroom. And be transparent. So when my kid comes home, I'm asking how their day was, and if they had a, a specific curriculum, I need to know what that is so that I can answer their questions. So that I can say to my kid, "How did that make you feel? What was your experience with that? Why did you pick that book to read? What was interesting about that for you?"
Thank you. All right, let's start with Mr. Minkie.
Look, Jeremiah, District Five. Look, I work in sales. So in sales, like, you know, there's a decision maker, and then there's people that work in operations. So I need to get fuel from the people in operations before I talk to the decision maker, right? Decision making, that's the ultimate decision. So right now, on this, the decision maker's the parents, right? The operations are the teachers, right? So I need to know what the teachers are doing in order to make a good decision for, from the parent's perspective, right? They're the biggest decision makers. So the objective here is, like he said, teachers, they're, they're everything. That's, that is what matters. That is what's important. And that's the only way we're going to move forward, if we know their concern, because they're in the classroom. And I haven't heard from a lot of these teachers, to be honest with you. I went around, I've talked to a few. I've been involved at Fuquay, Dixie Bee, Terre Haute South, Sarah Scott. They know me here because I go there and talk to them with my kids. I've sat down with more than five people at a time to figure out what's going on with the kids. So I, I'll stop right on.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
I always have to follow him. This is my, this is my, this is my, my name's Michael Kukowicz from District Five. And I have to agree, our teachers are all highly educated professionals who do a great job. And we don't need to be micromanaging them at all. We need to let them do their thing. If you have a concern, then go to parent-teacher's meetings, talk to your kids, talk to your teachers one-on-one. But no, we don't need to post curriculums or lesson plans on the internet for people to review. So, thank you very much.
Clark Cowden, District Four. I come from a family of educators. My mom, my dad, my grandfather, my grandmother, my aunt, my cousin, my brother, and my son are all teachers, principals, high school counselors, and college professors. I have a strong support for our teaching community. I think some of the problems we've heard about in the news is because some parents feel like they've asked questions, and they've been blocked and not gotten the answers that they have wanted. I think the problem in our divided society is we think in terms of either or, either teachers or parents. We need to think in terms of both and. Parents are not the enemy. Teachers are not the enemy. We're all on the same team. We need to work together because the more we do that, the stronger we will get, and the better it will be for our children in the long run.
Let's start with Carrie and then, please.
Carrie, District One. I just echo a lot of what you guys said, but also just, I, I have a seven-year-old who won't talk to me. So, parent involvement in the curriculum, I email the teachers just to find out what I should be asking him, and just so I can keep up with his day. He has behavioral issues, so I want to make sure I'm staying on top of his education. I'm not questioning their curriculum. I know they just changed math. I try to stay informed, but I'm not, they are the experts. They know what they're doing. They went to college for that. I went to college for library science and not for curriculum. So I trust their decisions in that. So I just want to stay involved, and I hope other parents would be more involved and reach out. The teachers, that in my experience, are so welcoming when you reach out to them. They want your kid to succeed. And so I just really hope that more, more parents are more involved in their students day-to-day. So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Darrell Summerlot, District Five. I want to take a quick second. How many teachers do we have in the room? Can you hold your hand up? Thank you for what you do. We would not be in the position we are if it wasn't for you. Thank you. And secondly, we need to give the power back to the teachers. The teachers are the ones that raised us, taught us what we needed to get through this life. We need them at our back. We need them to support us. As far as parents, yes, having curriculums, knowing what your child's learning, that's great. But give the power back to the teachers. They need to teach. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
JD Skelton. Sorry, JD Skelton, District Two. The key word, I agree with everyone up here. The teachers are the experts. We don't go to our doctor and tell our doctor what to do to treat our illnesses, do we? Although we probably want to, but do we actually do that? Probably wouldn't work good. But the parent involvement is the key term. Getting the parent to get involved with the teacher to better understand what the teacher's thinking, what the curriculum is, and how to better understand to help their child. That's the key to all this.
Yes, sir.
All I know is I'm a parent, and my kids are coming up in the school corporation here very soon. And I'm going to want to know everything that I feel like I need to know. And the teachers, if they got to deal with people like me, they probably need a raise, you know? And, you know, the teachers, everybody wants to talk about this or that, you know, and all... all these questions. Nobody's going to remember every single question we talked about tomorrow. But if you do remember one thing, people get up here and say whatever pleases your ear, and when it comes down to brass tacks, you need somebody who's going to get in there and try to come up with a solution. And I'm sitting here telling you, I ain't got all the answers, but I will work hard to get them. And there's a teachers' union that is supposed to represent the teachers, and we're going to find out what they've been doing, you know? Because there's more workload coming down the pipeline for every single teacher, you know? It's a thankless job, just like probably being on school board is going to be. Thank you.
All right. Yes, sir.
Everything that happens in this county, it starts and passes through our schools. Our future mayor, our future councilman, our future doctors, attorneys, plumbers, carpenters, dishwashers.
Mr. Warner, could you please get a mic? I'm getting that, people can't hear it in the back. Sorry about that. Okay, try it now.
Okay. What I was saying was...
That's better. That's better. Go ahead.
Okay. Oh, I'm still Ken Warner. Everything that happens in this county, I was saying, passes through our schools. It either starts at the school or passes through the schools. In the schools today are our future councilmen, probably mayor, doctors, attorneys, carpenters, plumbers, you know, every position that we have, plus our future jail inmates. So I think the percentages are going to be directly according to what kind of resources and what kind of support we give our classroom teachers. And yes, I was married to a teacher, and my parents were teachers, so maybe I'm a little biased, but really think about, I think everybody in this classroom could go back and think about the one teacher that may have changed their life, or turned their, you know, turned them into what they are now, and has guided them for the future. So obviously, I think we should support the teachers as much as we can.
Thank you very much. Okay. I think, yes.
I don't know if any of you are familiar with the Mark Twain quote, where he says you can judge a community by its schools, its jails, and its libraries? We could apply that to Vigo County. I mean, I'm a teacher cheerleader. I volunteered at my kid's school for years and years. I got so interested in what was going on in school, that's why I decided to run for the school board. These people, I mean, they are in there day in, day out, working, most of them off the clock. The hours that they put in, that they're not even paid for. If we could just start with that one thing, recognizing the amount of hours that the teachers put into their job, that would go a long way in solving some of these problems.
Thank you very much.
We got a teacher named Ms. Tanya Path that knows all about this. Okay?
All right. Let's move on now to the next question. We got several questions on the topic regarding to, would you advocate for banning certain books? So it's kind of summed up in one question. What is your position in general on banning books? Yes, Mr. Warner?
I think the librarian may have something to say on this. I'm generally opposed to banning books. So I took a library science class in Indiana State, went back to business school, and I was assigned to research the books that had been banned by the ISU library. And I was appalled to find out that everything by Kurt Varnegut had been banned, Catcher of the Ride had been banned, Mice and Men had been banned, things that we thought were classics had been banned at different times, you know, through the library. In the age we have now, I think we should have age-appropriate materials for our kids. Don't get me wrong. But I will tell you this, in the age of internet, there is nothing that your kids, that we could stop, you know, in a library or anyplace else that your kids can't see if they want to. And that comes from the home deciding what they should see. I generally do not like the idea of outright banning books.
All right. Thank you very much. And go ahead, Carrie.
Carrie, District 1. So I'm a public librarian. I also spend a large part of my job volunteering for the Indiana Library Federation on the Intellectual Freedom Committee. I help libraries across the state develop policy and help with challenges, and help protect information access. So we want parents to retain the right to what their kids read. We want the parents to be involved in what their kids read, but we want the access to be there for everyone. So I want everyone to be able to read whatever they would like. And so if a parent is upset about a classroom assignment or a book in a library, don't ask your kid to pick a different book. Ask the teacher to, an alternative book. Most of the teachers I know are happy and already have an alternative book planned. So just reach out to your teacher or your librarian if you have a question, because most of them love to talk about it. So...
You know what? Mr. Kukiewicz will have you go first, so that he doesn't have to come in. Just to be fair.
I gotta stop, stop following him.
Fair play.
I am Mike Kukiewicz in District 5 still, and I'm just appalled by the concept of banning books. And if you're concerned about a book changing the way of somebody's thinking, you're not scared of books, you're scared of people thinking. So I've, I mean, I've seen some of these banned book lists in other districts, and they were books I read in high school. And I'm still here, and I'm still pretty normal. So, I just, and it should be age-appropriate, and parents should definitely be involved in what their kids are reading. But it just, it just smacks of something terrible to think we're banning and burning books in some areas. It's just horrifying. Thank you.
Mr. Mckinney.
Yurt of the turtle, oh marvelous me, for I am the ruler of all that I see. Y'all know Dr. Seuss. So you know what's happened to him? Yeah, that's all I got to say. Y'all get it.
So my wife is a media center specialist, so if I don't answer this question, I'm going to have to answer for her later. We've all read legislation lately that was talking about teachers and librarians serving jail time and being put on lawsuits for the books that they have in their library. We should be able to have honest, age-appropriate conversations with our students, starting from kindergarten all the way up through 12th grade. If you don't like a book, ask your student, "Why is that book something you wanted to read?" And then engage them in a conversation about your expectations and what they want to see out of that. And actually talk to your student and be open to listening why they wanted to read that book. You should be able to walk in there and see a book that represents you, where you're from, your culture, your religion, who you are. I want to see local authors like Cathy Miller and Tridara McLaren. I think those are, those are important to our community, and making sure that they see themselves in the books that are available is great. And if they pick a book that you wouldn't think they were interested in, ask them why.
I believe everybody has...
I'm standing here thinking to myself, "What year is it? We're talking about banning books?" I mean, I remember being a little kid and hearing about this. I thought that society had learned, but I guess we haven't. Everybody knows we want what's age-appropriate. I agree with all of you. I think everybody here would say that. But the fastest way to get a kid to read something that you don't want them to read is to ban it. I mean, yay, raw! Bookstores are going to be so happy when you start banning books.
Don't press that button.
All right. All right. Thank you very much for answering that question. We had several questions on this next topic, which is the referendum. And so we're going to combine a couple of questions here to kind of ask a collective one, which is, "What was your position on the last year's referendum? Will each candidate," this is one that goes out to, and this is one exception where we will ask each person to respond if they would like, "Will each candidate state whether he or she will support any future referendums by answering yes or no?"
No.
Okay, let's... Go ahead.
Carrie Labella, District 1. I did support the referendum in May, and I will support future referendums. Our high schools need fixed. I'm sorry, well, not even fixed. We need new high schools. I'm sorry. We need new buildings.
Yeah, let's, let's do this, because I think, because we're asking each candidate. Let's go and just work our way down the line. Answer that question.
So Craig in your District 2, I did support both referendums. I heard the custodian at West Vigo saying that they were worried about asbestos, and their friends that were getting sick, and the mold and the dust that were in our classrooms causing students to get sick. We have to do something, and that is going to take money. I also think that in the future referendums, we just got to make sure that we're not putting our farmers' family farms out of business, not hurting small business owners, those that have property in the area. We just have to make sure that we're paying attention to our full community and not just blindly going in and saying, "Let's fix a school." Let's make sure we're making it in an informed manner.
Thank you.
Dylan Moss, District 2. And I think that we get money from the state first, so we need to figure out what we do with that. And then we'll talk about referendums later on down the road, because I actually went out and knocked on doors for the referendum, thinking that this casino is going to get built, and our kids need every opportunity. So if we get 300 million, or whatever the number was, that was wonderful in my mind. But then you get down to 22 years of taxes, ain't nobody in their right mind going to vote for that. So why would you not have a Plan B ready when it was so obvious to some uneducated person like myself possibly, or anybody else in the community? They all said, they knew they was voting no before it even got on there. So we need, as leaders, supposed leaders, we need to have multiple ideas going at the same time, you know? Invite everybody to get better ideas.
Thank you very much.
J.D. Skelton. I voted no on the last referendum. Moving forward, I want another referendum that we could vote yes on. By far, folks, we all know, something has to be done with the current situation we're in with our schools. If you walk through West Vigo, if you walk through Terre Haute South, Terre Haute North, some of the elementary, some of the middle schools, something has to be done. But how can we look at it from a different angle to possibly alleviate some of the tax burden on some of the taxpayers with the property taxes? We farm. My family farms. This is important to everyone out there. Not only the people that have the property taxes, but everyone in the community and everyone that pays taxes across the board. Because guess what, folks? We all have students. We all have either grandchildren. We all have sons or daughters that are going to have to make a decision on this. And like I said earlier today, the next decision we make in a year and a half to two years will set up the next 50 for this county.
Jim Bell, District 2. So I voted no also for the referendum. Reason I voted no, and probably a lot of people voted no, was because you have to have trust in your school board. You have to have trust. There is not trust in this school corporation, in this school board. So why would I give you my money if I don't trust what you're going to do with it? So that's why I voted no. Future referendums? We got to gain the trust back in this community to even think about more referendums. We got to work with what we got for now and gain trust back so we can get this schools taken care of.
I'm Ken Warner. I voted yes for the first referendum. I voted no on the second referendum, because I thought it was the wrong referendum at the wrong time. You don't take on a quarter of a billion-dollar building program when you're having 40-year high inflation, labor inflation, materials inflation, and labor shortages. That is a recipe for financial disaster, and I think it would have led to a lot of cost overruns, and would have put us in a worse position 15, 20 years down the road. We need to be planning for the next 50 to 70 years, not the next 10 years. Thank you.
Josh Stonebreaker, District 4. I voted no on the referendum. There were several reasons. Mr. Bell hit several of them. There was no transparency with the school board or the school corporation. We need to know where our money is going. You got to show that you can be physically responsible before I let you dive into my pockets for more money. One of the things I hope to do, if I get elected to the board, is be able to do that. Be able to show everyone where the money is going, how we're using the money, and build that trust again that the citizens in the school board should have with one another. If we don't do that, then I can't see how we can get another referendum passed.
Clark Coud in District 4. It's a fact that some companies have chosen not to move here, because our school buildings are in such bad shape. It's a fact, some families have chosen not to move here. It's a fact that some of our students every year are transferring to other counties around us, because our schools are in such bad shape. That's why I voted in favor of the last referendum, because doing nothing is not an option. People I know on both sides tell me the same thing. Our schools are in bad shape, and we have to do something. The key skill is collaborating, listening to the community, finding out what people are willing to do, what they're willing to pay for. I don't want it to be a terrible financial burden on anybody. Most people I know are willing to pay something, but they don't want to be in a situation where they're wiped out financially in order to do it. So we have to work together to find a solution. I would support something that's good. It depends on, if it's a good program, I would be in favor of it.
Yes, sir.
Rick Berger, District 5. I did support the last referendum, but we did learn some things from that, too. I think this community knows we need to do something and not nothing, as you hear from all the candidates up here. What that is, I think we got to go back to the drawing board and work together, more collaboration. You know, I'm a farmer. It affects farmers a lot. I understand that. I want solutions. I think we all need to come to the table and see how we can make these solutions happen. Let me give you an example. Two months ago, we had an industry here in town that was bringing in 300 good-paying jobs. And they threw me off guard. Usually, Duke Energy, we bring people in for new, looking to build factories here. They brought someone in, and they said, "Let's stop your local high school." We stopped at one of the schools, went in, we got, we came out, and they said, "We're not coming here. It's because of your schools." I said, "What do you mean? Bathrooms closed, five-gallon buckets. You've all seen it. And our teachers have to work with this, so stop is the last word."
Yeah. Hi, I'm Mike Kukiewicz from District 5 again. Actually, I did vote no on the last one, basically because I have a lack of trust, and I haven't seen the credibility built up in the school corporation. That, and I got my assessment like two days before the vote. And what I feel, yes, they need replaced, but don't ask me for a big bucket of money. Explain to me where it's going, how it's going to go, what the schedule's going to look like. I remember walking into Terre Haute South to go to an event, and in the auditorium, seats were roped off, so you couldn't sit on them because they were broken. Well, the next thing that came out of the school corporation is, "Well, we need astroturf for our football fields." Well, you need to fix the schools. Where did the maintenance money go? And then, then we had the, you know, the Aquatic Center, which was somehow brought in under 10 million, even though it should have been another referendum. I'm just really curious about where the maintenance money went. How are you going to prevent the same situation from occurring very soon? And thank you for stopping me.
Who any of our student loans? Okay, are they paid off? All right, so he's spending money before you get it, something in there. So anyway, this is why I feel, yes, we need better schools. We all know that. We need better schools. Matter of fact, I worked with Centas for about two years. I'll be honest, in two years, I tried to get the schools, we get on a facility program, they didn't have anybody in position for it. They do now, but furthermore, we've had the FBI here, we've had people locked up, we've had indictments. There is no community trust. So for me to vote yes, absolutely not. Do I want to vote yes? Absolutely. But I need to have some structure that's going to make sense for us. You can't, money's not going to solve our structure problem. All right? We got to fix our schools within the curriculum, within what we're doing within our community, and then we can start worrying about money. Do we need it? Yes. Will we get it? Yes. Do we have people to care?[1700.03] that care? Yes. We need to cultivate those people and do that. So that's my comments.
I gotta follow that. Daryl Summerlot, District Five. I voted no on referendum, and the reason being is, we were gonna build additional structures for our schools. And I know North High School is gonna have an additional building built, and we were going to get just a facelift of the interior. How about we fix what we have, and then we can add on later on? We need to fix what we have. A pig is still a pig, even if you put lipstick on it. So it made no sense to me. I would vote yes if it made sense. This one absolutely did not. As I believe most candidates said, there's absolutely no trust in Vigo County School Corporation, but we do want you to trust us. And we are working to gain your trust. And that's why we're all here. Thank you.
Well, I'm the only one up here that actually voted whether or not to put that referendum on the ballot. So what we say isn't what really matters. What matters is what the voters said. The voters all said no. Resoundingly, no. Personally, was that the perfect plan for me? No. It really doesn't seem like it's sensible to put millions of dollars into something that has been let go for so long that it basically can't be fixed. One of the things that I really want you to think about, and I proposed this, but as just my one person on the board, it went nowhere, is that when you build everything at the same time, it falls apart at the same time. If you build everything at once, you have to pay for it and ask for so much money. I think it's just common sense that we stagger, that we have a plan where we do these things little by little, just as you would if it was your own home, instead of, okay, we need everything done at once, and then here we are, back here again in 50 years. I mean, we saw this, right? We all know what happens.
All righty. Well, with that, believe it or not, I'm checking my clock. It is exactly 7:45. So that is the end of our public question and answer part of this. I do have a note from the League of Women Voters for the candidates. If you have not responded to vote411.org, please check your email from League of Women Voters from September the 12th. If you did not have your question answered, they will be around at 8 o'clock from 8 to 8:30, so you can ask them personally your question. So we are going to hear final thoughts from our candidates. It's not quite done yet. We're gonna hear final thoughts from our candidates, one minute apiece. And we're gonna start on the opposite end of the dais and work our way back this way. So we're gonna start with you. Yes, two in a row.
Okay. Well, I could go on and on, as many of you who come to board meetings know that I do. I'm surprised that we didn't talk about closing Meadows Elementary.
That was the next question on my list, if we have more time.
If there's anything that has upset the community, it was closing that school. I voted no. Mrs. Wise voted no. We were two out of seven. So obviously, we needed two more hands in the air to save that school, which we did not have. We had community support. I mean, parent after parent after parent told us, don't do this. We had people involved with the casino that you brought up that said, you know, let's see what happens on the east side with the casino before we close down east side schools. That could have been an option, that we could have waited. And then the other thing we're dealing with is now the size of Lost Creek Elementary. I really wish that we could, as a community, focus on smaller elementary schools. A lot of these problems, bullying, poverty, you can catch those in that setting. It's too late to wait till we have 2,000 kids in the high school.
Thank you very much.
Daryl Summerlot, District Five. A minute to wrap it up here. A problem to any solution or any problem is to realize you have one. And Vigo County does have a huge problem. We have deteriorating schools, and we don't have the funds currently to solve that. That's why I wanna be completely transparent. I wanna have an entire list of what money goes where to what contractors. I wanna know exactly where that $180 million a year goes to. And at the end of that, I believe we would figure out a lot of our problems. And I think we could fix a lot of our schools, and kinda going off what she was saying, you know, staggering the schools out rather than fixing them all at once, I believe that would definitely solve. So thank you all for coming out. I appreciate your time and listening. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jeremiah Meekie, District Five. I think the biggest thing that sums up me running is accountability for the administration. I think we really need that, and we really need to build up community trust. It's very important. You know, there's 14 people up here running for school board, let's be honest. So obviously, there's a concern in the community. For me, it's a community involvement, really understanding the people, people knowing the school board members, me being in the schools, me being in the community, and trying to figure out how we're gonna get this. Not to mention, you know, COVID brought a lot of issues with this, but, you know, the school's got $45 million in E.S.S.E.R. funds during this. Where'd that go? I'm just curious. Now, I know there's allocations of certain funds, so I'm not gonna get plain, but what I need to know is, what are the processes and what are the decisions behind the scenes that the community doesn't get to know? That's what I wanna communicate to you, and I do want a better school system. I do want better things. And if you vote for me, I guarantee y'all do my best to bring that to this community because I care about it.
Hi, I'm Mike Kukowicz from District Five. I realize the importance of fixing and new schools. I did have a thought, and he kind of alluded to it. Indiana's sitting on $6 billion surplus. They sent us a few dollars back. Maybe we need to talk to Mr. Ford and Mr. Heaton and seeing if we can get any allocated our way. Taking that off my time. But I will say this, buildings are fine, but kids don't learn from buildings. They learn from teachers. And what I have to say is that we need to pay our teachers well, give them the best respect we can, and that'll be the biggest benefit we had. Because frankly, I went to Pi Minto, which was like the school in a Christmas story. And I didn't learn anything from the building, but we had some really excellent teachers there that brought me out of the wilderness and made me a human. So yeah, that's all I've gotta say. Thank you very much.
Rick Berger, District Five. You're gonna trust this board for $163 million budget. That's a lot of money. City budget 73, county 70, larger than the two city, those two budgets. My vision, my hope, my dream is to make this the best school corporation that we could ever have. I wanna turn ideas into action. I'm passionate for this job, folks. I'm passionate for it. I could tell you tonight, I want this job, but my wife's probably thinking, why? I got three grandchildren just gonna come up through here, and I wanna prepare that for the best school. We can do it. And I told you earlier in the evening here, we are doing it. We just gotta come together. We gotta listen to each other. We gotta be nice. And the last thing I'll say, I want this job. I do. Thank you.
Clark Cowden, District Four. I'm running for the board because I want to provide leadership for the future, because we are at an absolutely critical juncture in the life of our community. And everything rises and falls on leadership. All of the problems we've talked about tonight can be solved with the right leaders on the board. With the wrong leaders on the board, none of these problems get solved, and many of them get worse. In the Chinese alphabet, the same character that means crisis means opportunity. We have a crisis in our schools. That's only half the story. The whole story is that we can turn this crisis into an opportunity. It's an opportunity to do better, to prepare our students for the jobs of the future that do not even exist today. And it all comes down to the right leaders on the board. I hope I can earn your vote this fall, because I believe I can provide leadership for the future.
Josh Stonebreaker, District Four. We've talked a lot tonight about CRT, banning books. We've talked about where our platforms sit with the school corporation and how we wanna see things go. My biggest thing is, I wanna be a voice for the parents. I wanna be able to help the teachers out. You know, we've talked about all these things, but one thing that we never touched on was the family nucleus. As teachers, how much easier would it be for you guys to teach your students if you had family involved? Not ask you to put out your curriculum ahead of time, but just being involved with you guys to help you teach, help you bring our children along. It's not up to you to raise our children. We're the parents. It's up to us. But it's up to us to send you decent human beings so you can teach them. Thank you.
I'm Ken Warner. Buildings are important, but I wanna point out, my father, in the 1960s, started what became the academically talented program in Vigo County in a classroom made out of a garage behind Maryland School. It's the innovation that happens inside the classroom that's the most important, not the building itself. I believe that every child in Vigo County should have an equal opportunity in academics, athletics, and the arts. I think that we do a fairly good job, but we need to level the playing field. If I'm elected, there's three, basically three principles I'm going to follow. First of all, is what we're voting on going to enhance or improve the academic outcome of our kids? All of our kids, every child? Number two, are we being good stewards with taxpayer monies by voting for this? And number three, is this a want or a need? I firmly believe that we should fill the needs before we start looking at all the wants. Thank you.
Jim Bell, District Two. So the reason I decided to run is because I wanted to help the community. I wanna be your, the community's voice on the board. I'm open-minded to listen to others' opinions, new ideas, and things that may change my mind, so what I think and what I believe. But I want you guys, I want the community to tell me what they want, and then I will be your voice on that board to vote for that.
We talked about JD Skelton, District Two, excuse me. Everyone should know that by now. We have talked about the teachers and the situation with them being in charge of their curriculum. The one thing we have not talked about, and something that truly is close to me, is because we haven't touched base on the teachers and retaining the experienced teachers we have with competitive pay. We've not talked about being able to fill the open positions and have competitive pay with good teachers coming in from the outside. We are losing folks left and right, because we get them in here, we train them, they learn, they become excellent teachers, and two or three years later, they move out of the school corporation and go elsewhere where they can make $10,000 or $15,000 more. The reason why I know this is, I know five or six that have done it, and I know why they did it. But it's something that has to be addressed. The definition of Sandy is, you do the same thing time and time again and expect a different result. And I feel that that's where we're at with this current board and school corporation, that we don't try different things and change.
Well, if you want change, it's here. I'm gonna step up to the plate, and like a feller over here said, we need to get our money from the state. We need to go to our state representatives, and if Vigo County has a need, we need to create our own legislation. And there's people that know how to write this stuff up, you know? And I will be the conduit from point A to point B, and I'm sacrificing my everything for this school board position, because I am adamant about being a leader and actually solving the problem, because all these are cookie cutter answers that you have got the whole time. You know, you hear every election year, I'm ready to do the work. I've been honest the whole time. I don't have every single answer, but there are people that have it, and they're within our grasp. You know, the only thing we can change is our community. And I'm here to help in any way, shape, or form, and I will go the extra mile, because I got a work ethic that came from the union, which knows how to build these buildings back. It's not hard. You can fix anything. You can remodel anything. You don't need brand-new buildings. You know, there's only so much I can tell you in a little bit limited time, and I hope that I did what I came to do and let the people know that my vote is for you guys and everything in this county, because it's my family where I was raised.
Craig in your district two. I wouldn't be up here if I didn't care about the kids, the staff members, the community that we're representing, and the overall community that we're a part of. This, the people that you're getting ready to elect are gonna be creating the next strategic plan for Vigo County. So you need to make sure that when you're looking at the leadership that you have going in that's gonna make the next five-year plan after 2025, that these are the people that you're looking to elect. And you need to make sure that they have the vision of the community moving forward. We need to make sure that we have all of the things in place to make sure our teachers have what they need, the law enforcement that are working in our buildings have what they need. But we also need to make sure that when we're creating a strategic plan, that there is accountability for the people in the administration that we can benchmark off of, because they shouldn't just be able to say, here's our strategic plan. If we meet it, great. If we don't, okay, we'll create the next one. There should be benchmarks and accountability for everyone involved in the board. We wanna make sure that our administration is upholding that as well.
Carrie Lobella, District One. So one of the major reasons I ran for school board, first and foremost, were my own children. I have another 16 years personally invested in the school corp to watch my kids grow and learn in this school. And one of the things I saw at school board meetings is, I really just wanted to see more questions being asked and not just approvals. And so I promise that I will ask questions, and I wanna consider the policies and the recommendations from all of the stakeholders or the audiences, and not just from the students, or the parents, or the teachers, or the taxpayers, but everyone involved. And Craig took my note about the strategic plan. It's because he's sitting next to me. But I promise, my experience as a librarian, I do my own research. I can dig deeper. You can ask anybody here. I love to dig deeper. And in my spare time, I read board minutes and explore new opportunities and grants. And I promise to do that as a board member. And if anybody's question didn't get asked, I would just love for you to reach out. I have a website. And just as your only candidate, Lozen District One, please just vote for me in November. Thank you.
Well, despite recent allegations of copying notes, I would like to thank the dais for being incredibly respectful and very informative tonight. Could we just give everyone a hand for putting up a note? And with that, that will conclude this portion of this forum. We will be right back here next week. Thank you to the League of Women Voters, to the NAACP, to the Tribune Star, and to the Vigo County Public Library. Please feel free to ask all of your questions to our candidates. Thank you so much, and have a wonderful night.